Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. The Clerk, please take the role.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kail Smith. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much. We please rise for the pledge of allegiance and stand for a moment of solemn.
I, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as with all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
To move.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. The next order of business is the, is proclamations. We have none to be presented. We have two, one, two, two to be written to the record. Three to be written to record.
Councilmember Kail Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, August 12th, 2023, to be Bill Bridges Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Council President Smith also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, August 6th, 2023, to be Mike Awards Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Coghill presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, to be Daniel Kelly Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thinking, I need a motion to approve.
To move.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. The proclamations are approved. The next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council, profoundly will not be permitted. When you're called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood. For the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Tokyo, Japan. I was at the University of Oxford at St. Anthony's College, the Institute of Japanese Studies, and the University of London to work on the relationship between the United Kingdom, the USA, and Japan. I'm Global Intelligence Society U.S. National Candidate for President, 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. We represent the sex, gender, nationwide equality nexus. We are anti-equity. A concern of this council is that, but is also with our sister city, Japan, Saitama. You've had contact with Saitama, haven't you? You have? All right, Koroi Ame. What do you think that they think of the recent film Oppenheimer? Well, as far as I know, Oppenheimer has not been released in Japan. They know enough to hate it. I share that, I share that view. Koroi Amai, or Ame, is Black Rain. I would see the 1989 film by Shohei Inamura, and you'll know why Oppenheimer evokes such fury in Nihon in Japan. And not that Michael Douglas piece of, in my view, condescending junk. Black Rain refers to the problem encountered by people in Hiroshima after the falling of, I'm dropping, of the atomic weapon. It rained, which meant that there were people, pieces of people, that were falling on them. That is what to keep in mind about the Japanese when it comes to this problem. Mr. Lavelle, in the past, you have focused on opposition to, or at least reservation about the use of nuclear weapons, and I appreciate that. But we need to say something about this. I think this film is anti-Asian. It is anti-Hindu in the sense that there's a scene in this film that's, to me, reprehensible, in which the Bhagavad Gita, which is a holy book to tens of millions of Indians in the city and around the world, and in India in particular, and a naked girl. It's aroused a lot of very negative reaction among people who live in India. And I think that it is also anti-Shiho, Shinto, and Nihon. I know no Japanese who didn't want, and doesn't want, in the sense of past tense, a demonstration of the atomic weapon, and that is not part of this picture.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi, are you with us?
I am here. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. First, do no harm is not just a rule of medicine. Governments shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Blockbusting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. Politicians and municipal employees are public servants. My husband was an example of a dedicated model employee, a true public servant. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we, the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies. The Public School Board of Education in Pittsburgh has zero regard for the rights of the property owners, taxpayers, citizens, and voters in the Bon Air community. We do not consent to the detrimental school buildings remaining in our community. We do want a green space to replace the building and improve the location. This is the least that can be done to repair the loss that has occurred. The public servants of the school board shall work with the community to the best of their ability. It was fraudulent to claim that the community approved apartments. The waste, fraud, and abuse of school tax resources is tremendous regarding the long-closed schools. The school board has proven itself as detrimental. Will you be part of the solution? The green space is a partial reparation for the injuries we have endured. On June 20th, 2022, the detrimental Bon Air school worsened into being a disruptive and nuisance property. We have objected to apartments or anything other than a green space to replace the school. Tear it down. The building is a magnet to use to broke in. Three were taken out and handcuffed. Tear it down. Other neighborhoods have been delighted with worse. Tear it down. Now that McKinley Park is no longer part of Bon Air, we want the school to become a green space as a replacement. Thank you, Dr. Miller, for promoting global intelligence, not global governance. Stop the WHO.com. Screw the WHO.com. Say no to the WHO in any case. Follow real science, not bought and paid for propaganda. Even current Pittsburgh Public School employees have said the solution for Bon Air, pull down and create a green space. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of speaker is Joseph Smith.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm here. Hello, Mr. Burgess. I do remember having you in class or an online course in the fall of '09.
Well, I'm glad that, glad you're doing well.
Thank you. Anyway, I'm gonna get down to business, because when I was doing my Instagram stuff, I read that Pittsburgh moved to shrink arts portions of federal pandemic relief funds. And I'm urging this council that to shrink the funds for artists is kind of deleterious and kind of not doing good for our community. And we need to have arts funding because as artists, people need to be supported in creative endeavors to promote change, inclusion, and capability in all walks of life. Because I'm a photographer and creative artist and a writer, and I feel that we need arts to increase our, to increase our information and increase our understanding about the world. So that's my two cents. I mean, I oppose the bill to shrink arts portion of the federal pandemic relief. Arts needs to be funded so artists can live and create work and stuff and promote change. Because we live in a society that promotes malevolence and all of valetarius stuff. So the fact of the matter is, arts need to be defended in all 16 possible directions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Brent Bergerstock. Mr. Bergerstock, are you with us? Do you see him? No? All right. We'll come back to him if we have time at the end of speakers. Our next registered speaker is Alex Bates. Mr. Bates, are you with us? No, Mr. Bates. Our next order, our next registered speaker is Marcia Brands, Bands?
Close enough. It's Marcia Bandys. I think, unless you've got another person that's...
That's you?
Okay.
I just mispronounced it. I'm working on it.
Great. Okay. So, good day, everyone, and thank you for all being here. I appreciate it. I'm Marcia Bandys. I'm chairwoman for Pittsburgh for SEDAW, a women's rights organization based on the U.N. Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. I live in Squirrel Hill. I've been here on June 27th and July 11th advocating for the continuance of the Gender Equity Commission and an executive director of the Gender Equity to lead the commission. I understand that there is movement to rebuild the Gender Equity Commission, and for that, I am extremely excited. And as important as it is to add members to the commission, it is equally important to staff it with the right people. To that end, I've included in my comments an excerpt from the ordinance listing the gender equity areas of experience that were and still are deemed necessary. I include it because I know that you do have the opportunity to vote on who's appointed to the commission. For example, though many women still fight for equal pay for equal work, those living well above the median income may not face the same fair and safe housing or transportation challenges that women living below the median income level do. So that's why we need to make sure that we have people representing different groups. I have also included the original executive director job posting to hopefully provide a better understanding of responsibilities of the job and why the executive, why the Gender Equity Commission needs an executive director. Please remember that the salary posted was increased to a full salary after a couple of years as the executive director recorded activities and workload necessary for the Gender Equity Commission to be successful. At the end of this, that's basically all I have to say for that, but I just also just want to add a big thank you for, it's been a number of years now, but it continues to pay off, and that is the paid leave program that the council has supported a number of years ago that has continued to help people, especially those who don't make big salaries, to be able to have time off with their family or members when someone is sick. So I just, I hope you wear that as a, as pride, great pride for what you've done. And that's it. And I've got these, and I'll give them to whoever I'm supposed to give.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Leslie F. Thiberg. Dr. Thiberg, are you with us? All right. Our next order speaker, our next registered speaker is Jamie Christian. Jamie, are you with us?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jamie Marie Christian. I'm the founder and executive director of Let Us Turn Up the Beat Sustainability Collective. We are based in Carrick. Thank you so much for your time. I am here to speak in support of the tri-party agreement and say I would never, ever want to be on City Council because I stuck around for the conversation last week, and I left with the worst headache I think I've ever had before in my entire life. So kudos to y'all. I couldn't do your job. When I was leaving, I also thought, it's so ungodly hot in this, in this building. I don't know how y'all do it either. And it must be incredibly frustrating to know you all want the same thing, but there's a big roadblock. Trust. Trust is the biggest roadblock on the path to progress. Trust is important, and it's important to have protections in place to ensure a fair and equitable process because trust is an issue for every stakeholder. Protections in place to ensure timeliness, to ensure ethical business practices, to ensure equity, and to, excuse me, to ensure that you're all making the best choices for the communities you serve. Because at the end of the day, they put their trust in you when they cast their vote. That's a lot of trust and a lot of potential distrust. It could be disastrous for those communities that you represent. It could be disastrous for future underserved homeowners, their children, and urban farmers, especially farmers. I can tell you firsthand, a farmer's trust is hard to get and even harder to keep. Ironically, when I was typing this, Abdul Khedira from Manicucha Farm and Ebony Evans from One Sun Farm both texted me and asked me to speak on their behalf. I'd be happy to show you those texts as well to, you know, to prove my point. But they can't be here today. But they trust me to speak on their behalf. It's growing season. There's a lot of food to be harvested and distributed to their communities, the communities that y'all serve. On the very land that they've been working on the last few years, and it's the same land that could be purchased by the United Smali Bantu and out of the end if this agreement moves forward. They can't be here to defend their work, their blood, their sweat, and their tears, but I am. I have their trust in their backs. So I ask, when you're casting your vote, please be thoughtful, empathetic, and compassionate, even if you don't understand the situation of those who you are giving your yea or nay to. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Are those here in the chamber who wish to speak, please come forward.
Morning, council. Thank you for having me. Jo Doming with the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, and I'm excited to see the agreement move forward for the land bank. Thank you to everyone who's worked so hard to make that happen. The one thing I want to make sure is possible is for the leases of the city land to be able to designate someone, and we've talked about this. So just making sure that they can designate someone else if perhaps, you know, they have a partner that has resources that can purchase the land for them. And we want to make sure that's possible. So whether it's directly in this legislation or there's another route, but that's the one thing. But thank you so much, and I look forward to putting this, moving forward. Have a good day.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up in Kaley River's tires up on Beffert Avenue. I want to come down today to tell you that I want to thank, well, let me, sorry, let me start over again. The Kaley River's tire residents, thank you for security guards. In our newsletter, we're going to have security guards, and it says, "It also shows you care, Kaley River's management." Okay, now, I want to also thank our maintenance team. We only had two men at one time that was taking care of 190 apartments. We now have three. That's Steve, Mel, and Keith. He's new, and he's a good worker. Also, I want to thank Jackie Watkins, W-A-T-K-I-N-S. That's our assistant manager, and Natanya Reed for the time and consideration they have all shown us. I don't think that council, I don't think that you really helped us like I thought you should have. But you did come up there, but you should have brought the Department of Agent, I thought at that time. But I do thank you, Mr. Lavelle, because you did come. And Mr. Coghill, and he was saying, you know what, a lot of them voted for me. And I told you, if you come up to the old people and you tell us what you think, and just show us that you do care about us. Because some of the old people, when I came down here years ago, when I first started coming, he told me, he said, yeah, go tell them I worked a dollar a day to make swimming pools up in our poor neighborhood. Now they're making the kids pay. Also, Superior, Superior, our governor is not signing, well, he signed the bill and they vetoed it. Superior needs to know, and if I could talk to him to let him know how this school district is, because I can remember when they built the school up in South Hill, $2 million, and in Homewood where our little black babies had to wear winter coats in certain rooms. I'm telling you, this is the truth. I was a school guard. I used to go into the schools. I seen it. So you see me when I come down here, I'm fucking because you don't treat our poor black children like you do the white. Ms. New baby, when she brought her baby and sat and brought the baby, I didn't hear nobody say nothing about that. She had her baby here. Then her last name, and I'm looking through, I see lawyers, and there's one that's your last name. Is this nepotism? Who was he? Is he kin to you, this Strasburger? Is he kin to you? Because there's some lawyers, and I have never seen them names before. Once you became the councilwoman. Also, all these years I've been coming here, I did not realize that she worked for Gilman. How could that be?
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, councilmembers. Will Parker, represent Pittsburgh and the whole Allegheny County. I'm here today in recognition of National Black Business Month.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Yes, ma'am. And what that means is it's time to go out your way to shop black this month, all month. I also want to address Councilman Bobby Wilson because he's the one who's in charge of small business initiatives on council. And well, that's what it says under, online. But I want to address, who's in, who's in charge of small business initiatives? Who's in charge of the community and economic development? That's not you, Bobby Wilson? You didn't say no. So I want to address you, or whoever it may be, doesn't matter. There's $3.5 million that was set aside for, out of our ARP money that's supposed to go out in small business grants. That money has not been allocated yet, and I'm here to ask you all, why hasn't that money been allocated yet? Last week, I mentioned that the money for the food policy wasn't allocated either, and that was just addressed recently. And I want the same thing for the small business grants. I go out my way for community development. I go out my way for small businesses, especially our black-owned businesses. This money is on the table, and I want to know why it hasn't been allocated yet. That's all I want to know. That's what I'm here to ask you all. And I want to make sure that this money goes out before it's too late, before y'all try to allocate that somewhere, as y'all are doing the same thing with the art funding, which that's another thing that I've seen listed that was your responsibility, Bobby Wilson, is it not? The Art Commission, I have, I heard nobody come here and call you out on that. You ran to be reelected. You want to be reelected. Now you got to hold up to your duties, or whoever's responsibility is. It's listed under the website. It's under you. So you shaking your head like it's not your responsibility. Well, fix that. Just fix it. So there's not missed messages sent out to the community on who we should address. Because I'll address any one of councilmembers here, but if you go on your website, you'll see that. Anyway, I just want to make sure that we get this money allocated appropriately. You know, that's $3.5 million that could go out in $10,000 grants to 350 businesses who desperately need that money. We just got over that COVID a couple of years ago, but these people still need that money. And I want to know what is taking so long. We cannot put our businesses on a back burner. We're in desperate need to increase our economy and increase our value so people could live and they could thrive here, and they could create jobs.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? Are there any other public speakers? Seeing none, we will now be no further speakers. We will move to presentation of papers. First of all, for myself, Mr. Coghill, for myself, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1826, Resolution Providing for Professional Services Agreement with Outwith Studios LLC, at a cost not to exceed $49,900 to conduct housing discrimination research and development and develop recommendations. Bill 1834, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I, Administrative Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, Sections 161.02 Competitive Bidding, Exceptions, 161.02a, Award of Professional Services Agreements, and 161.02b, Exemptions from Competitive Process to Amend the Approval Process for Professional Services Agreements and Exemptions from the Same, and Bill Number 1835, Resolution Requesting the City Solicitor to Provide City Council with a legal opinion, Reviewing the Propriety of the Agreement and Bidding Exemptions of the Agreement Between the City of Pittsburgh and Matrix Consulting Solutions Relative to the Police Staffing Study, and Directing the City Controller to Review the City's Contracting Procedures.
Thank you. Thank, huh? All right. So that takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No, you have to ask with a motion on 1935.
Oh, where? Is there a motion to waive?
Is there a motion? For this?
Your bills are introduced.
What's, I'm sorry. Is there, I'm confusing myself.
We're confused too, Mr. Chair.
We're in, we're in, we're in Chair of Human Resources. They're in my committee?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. They're not in Teresa's committee. I'm assuming they were in Teresa's, I thought they were in Teresa's committee. They're in my committee. All right.
You don't have to.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. I was talking.
They're, they're in, they're in my committee. I'm sorry. So there is, Mr., they are, yeah, there, there are, I gotta find them.
There, it's 26, 34, and 35, Mr. Chair.
Yes, it is. I'm getting there. I'm sorry. I thought they were in different. So I need a motion for, for 1835, and not the other two, right? 1835, okay.
Motion to waive the rules of council for Bill 1835.
I don't think you need to raise the rule of council. I think you just need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Okay. So I'd like to comment on it first.
First, I need a motion to approve 1835.
Motion to approve 1835.
I need a second.
Second.
Because it doesn't, it's not financial. It doesn't have to be held for eight days. It's a communication. It's communication. It's not, it's a resolution for communication.
Oh, asking for a legal opinion. Right.
Yes.
We're kind of all over the place. I apologize.
So let me, let me go backwards. In order for a legal opinion to be given to all members, I need a motion, I need a resolution that includes all members so that it's not just me doing it alone. And that's the point of the resolution. I do not think it has to have, it doesn't have to be rule-aided. It doesn't have to weigh the rules of council because this is not, this does not fall into the eight-day, the things we have to hold for eight days. We can just approve this at this moment and send it to Controller and to the Law Department.
So, Mr. Chair, may I?
So I need a motion to approve. Do we have a motion to approve? And it was a second?
Yes.
All right. So.
With discussion.
With discussion. Mr. Coghill first, then Ms. Gross, and then Mr. Kraus. We'll go right in order. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, first and foremost... First, first and foremost, I, I want to stress that, you know, in the press, it's been reported this is an investigation. In no way, shape, or form has that word ever came up between myself and, and our chairman here. This is simply looking at the procurement process, making sure everything was done in the proper procedure. Um, nothing more than that. We're not throwing out any allegations that the mayor's office deceived us. We're not, um, you know, pointing the finger at anything in particular. We're simply going to review the process because there are some questions around it. In order to protect this council and future councils that we do things by the correct rule of law. So, so that's what prompted these two bills. And um, that's all I have to say on it. I would hope for member support. Thank you.
Call to Ms. Gross.
Thank you. The bill is not long. And since we are, I was just scrambling to find it, both in my email, and then I realized it was in front of me on a piece of paper. Thank you, Madam S. Clark. Do you mind reading it?
I do not. Madam Clerk, if you would read, if you read the bill um, um, for the public's, so the public knows what we are doing exactly.
Bill eighteen thirty-five?
Eighteen thirty-five, yes.
Bill eighteen thirty-five. Resolution requesting the city solicitor to provide city council with a legal opinion reviewing the propriety of the agreement and bidding exemptions of the agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and Matrix Consulting Solutions relative to the police staffing study and directing the city controller to review the city's contracting procedures.
Ms. Gross, that's it.
Its entirety?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore resolved by the council of the City of Pittsburgh as follows. Section one. The city solicitor is authorized and requested to provide city council with a legal opinion regarding the propriety of the agreement between the city and Matrix Consulting Solutions executed pursuant to Resolution number three oh-six of two thousand and twenty-two and the exemption from the competitive bidding procedures to be delivered to council on or before September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Section two. The city controller is hereby authorized and directed to conduct a review of the city's competitive bidding procedures for professional services agreements. The controller is further requested to supply council with the timeline for completion of this review. And section three. The president of council, or her designee, is hereby authorized pursuant to two eleven of the Home Rule Charter to gather all information she deems appropriate to review the police staffing study.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, this section I'm trying to also now currently look up in live time on my phone. As, we did get this email last night, and I appreciate it. Is um, that last section, which is section two eleven of the Home Rule Charter?
Mr. Friesen's here. He can talk about it. Friesen, if you want to talk about, do you need to talk to our solicitors? Do you want our solicitors to talk about that?
If you'd like to speak to that, yeah, I'm trying to find it myself so that I know what I'm voting on. I, I suspect that is the part that authorizes an investigation by council.
Yeah, I think two eleven is that section.
This, this could also be done under three oh-six F, which is just the administrative actions of council as a body. So you can assign duties to the council president that don't necessarily rise to investigation, but two eleven of the Home Rule Charter is information required to units of government. So it's not, it's not the investigation section.
Great, thank you.
It's just um, council can ask information from any director head at any time and for any reasonable time. So that's what it's, that's what.
So we have it by right.
Yes.
But we're also just now saying in this section, it's not that we aren't authorized de facto, but we're just being more specifically that council in this vote is saying.
Yes, and the other thing is.
Redundant, but, but saying that we can do it.
Right, it's being redundant. And I want to make, make it very clear that I am acting on behalf of the president, not direct, not independent of her direction.
Got it. Got it, got it. That appreciate, I really appreciate you going through those kind of fine points because I didn't um, separately look that up. So again, the city solicitor is um, to provide city council with a legal opinion before September sixth, which is when, you know, a week after we reconvene. And that the city controller can review the competitive bidding procedures. Um, and requesting that the controller um, you know, it cooperates with our timeline. And then also that we can ask directors questions and they shall answer them.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kraus.
Um, so uh, I guess much of what I was gonna ask has pretty much been covered. My questions were all around procedure and how and why we're doing what it is that we're doing at this moment in time. Perhaps the only suggestion I might have had, uh, which is rather irrelevant now. Perhaps this could have still been introduced even with you as the sponsor under the hearings committee and handled. That way, there might have been less confusion.
In fact, I thought, I actually thought that's where it was. So that's why I was caught off guard. I thought it was in that committee myself.
Yeah, just don't want the, which was your desire too, Mr. Chair, don't want the public
Yes.
to wonder why we're doing what it is we're doing and, and making sure we're completely open and transparent about what it is we're doing. Especially at this time, which happens, and that's not just this administration, that's every administration. It's recess and things just boom, 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 come at us. Uh, and we want to make sure that we're acting in the best interest of those that we represent at all times. Appreciate it. I believe what we need now to do, Mr. Chair, is to vote this.
Yes.
To read, receive, file? No.
No. It'll be a motion to approve, roll call vote, and then we will, I'll go to the next committee.
And then, Madam Clerk, if I may ask you, then you'll forward this down to the solicitor. Is that what the process will be?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank, appreciate everyone's time with this.
Any other, anything else for members? All right, you've heard the motion and we've had discussion on the motion. I think it, I think it requires a, a, um, a roll call vote, I think. All right, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Okay, the bill, having received the legally required votes, ours finally passed. That takes us to, um, now back to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number eighteen twenty-seven. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Bear Solutions LLC. Clarksville, Tennessee, in an amount not to exceed eight thousand four hundred dollars for an advanced Train the Trainer Firearms Instruction Course.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Um, that takes us to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Uh, no new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number eighteen thirty-three. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Brennan Thrower in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars in full and final settlement of a discharge grievance.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No, no papers, Mr. Protem.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Uh, no new papers.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Cal Smith, Chair of Hearings and Policy. I have four papers.
Council President Teresa Cal Smith presents Bill number eighteen twenty-eight. Resolution submitting the names of Terry Shields, Dennis Downey, Blake Plavchak, and Gregory Solomon Cotler for consideration by the mayor for appointments to fill the city council CPRB non-law enforcement seats number one and three, in accordance with the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Conduct. Article six, Citizens Police Review Board.
Um, would we need a?
A motion to re-receive.
Need a motion to re-receive and file.
Uh, so, move.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor, since five by saying aye?
Aye.
Posers nay. Next bill.
Bill number eighteen twenty-nine. Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, submitting a fiscal audit of the South Side Parking Enhancement District Trust Fund dated July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two.
Also motion to read, receive, and file, please.
Need a second?
Again.
All those in favor, since five by saying aye?
Aye.
Posers nay.
Bill number eighteen thirty-six. Resolution further amending Resolution number seven seventy-two of two thousand and sixteen effective January one, two thousand and seventeen as amended entitled Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and seventeen capital budget and the two thousand and seventeen Community Development Block Grant Program approving the two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-two capital improvement program and by reducing Tile Beta Ada Fraternity, Inc. as a grant recipient and increasing Hope for Tomorrow by three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and authorize subsequent agreements. And Bill number eighteen thirty-seven. Resolution further amending Resolution number eight forty of two thousand and nineteen effective January one, two thousand and twenty as amended entitled Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and twenty capital budget and the two thousand and twenty Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-five capital improvement program by reducing Sheridan United Methodist Church as a grant recipient and increasing Hope for Tomorrow by five thousand five hundred dollars and authorizing subsequent agreements.
Thank you very much. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we are now ready to go to um, the um, um, we're, um, we're now ready to go to committees for final actions. Uh, starting with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number eighteen nineteen. Reported a committee on finance and law for July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number fourteen fifty-four. Resolution amending Resolution one oh-nine of two thousand and twenty-three, which authorized a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the total spend by nine hundred seven thousand sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cent for a new not to exceed amount of ten million three hundred seventy-three thousand fifty-four dollars and thirty-seven cent. Bill number? I have to scroll through the American. Do this, bills.
Right. You have to, you're reading all of them.
Want me to read them all?
You have to, you're gonna read them all, but we're not even gonna vote on some of them. So read, read all the bills.
Okay.
We have to put them all on the table.
Okay. Bill number?
She wants to skip to our bills. We're gonna lay them all on the table.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
I'm just confused.
So.
If they, I'm sorry, if.
We're going to present all the bills under this committee. I will then divide them after they're all laid on the table. I will divide them to some that will vote now. The others will lay open on the table. That is the procedure.
Lay open for final action after the public here. Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill seventeen oh-four. Resolution amending Resolution seven twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-two which re-appropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version Five. Bill seventeen oh-five. Resolution amending Resolution number four eleven of two thousand and twenty-two which authorized and amended agreement or agreements with the U R A of Pittsburgh for the completion of projects approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan by decreasing the not to exceed amount by one mil, by one million dollars to seventy-one million eight hundred seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and by aligning project lines accordingly. Bill seventeen oh-six. Resolution further amending Resolution six forty-seven of two thousand and twenty effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty as amended entitled Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget and the two thousand and twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-six capital improvement program by decreasing, by increasing bridge upgrades by nine hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred ninety dollars and one cent, increasing capital equipment acquisition by two hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-nine cent, reducing complete streets by one million five hundred thousand dollars, reducing facility improvements, recreation and senior centers by two hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-eight cent, reducing information systems modernization by thirty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and twelve cent, and increasing public safety equipment by six hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Bill seventeen oh-seven. Resolution further amending Resolution number eight eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-one effective December twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one as amended entitled Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and twenty-two capital budget and the two thousand and twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-seven capital improvement program by increasing capital equipment acquisition by five hundred sixty-nine thousand seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cent, reducing complete streets by seven hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, reducing facility improvements, recreation and senior centers by one million five hundred sixty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars, reducing information systems modernization by one hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars, and increasing slope failure remediation by one million nine hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-five cent. Bill seventeen oh-eight. Resolution further amending Resolution number seven twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-two effective December nineteen, two thousand and twenty-two as amended entitled Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and twenty-three capital budget, the two thousand and twenty-three Community Development Program and the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight capital improvement program by increasing capital equipment acquisition by nine hundred and seven thousand sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cent and reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by two hundred fifty-seven thousand sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cent. Bill seventeen oh-nine. Resolution amending Resolution five twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-one which authorized an amended cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the not to exceed amount by two hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-nine cent for a new total of ten million six hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cent. Bill seventeen ten. Resolution amending Resolution forty-three of two thousand and twenty-two which authorized the two thousand and twenty-two cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the not to exceed amount by five hundred sixty-nine thousand seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cent for a new total of thirteen million one hundred twelve thousand eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cent. Bill seventeen eleven. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to commit future two thousand twenty-four pay-go capital funds for the local match of the Department of Transportation's RACE grant in an amount not to exceed two million two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. Bill seventeen fifty-one. Ordinance supplementing the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I Administrative Article Three. Organization, Chapter one forty-one, offices generally by adding a new section, one forty-one point oh-three, to establish the Office of Equal Protection. Bill seventeen fifty-three. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Medical Debt Resolution, Inc. doing business as R I P medical debt for services relating to the purchasing and retiring of medical debt for certain City of Pittsburgh residents for some not to exceed one million dollars. Bill seventeen fifty-five. Resolution further amending Resolution number seven seventy-two of two thousand and twelve effective January one, two thousand and thirteen entitled Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and thirteen capital budget and the two thousand and thirteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand and thirteen through two thousand and eighteen capital improvement program by reducing recreation and senior centers by ten thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-four cent and increasing park reconstruction by ten thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-four cent. Bill seventeen fifty-six. Resolution further amending Resolution number eight fifty-eight of two thousand and fourteen effective January one, two thousand and fifteen entitled Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and fifteen capital budget and the two thousand and fifteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty capital improvement program by reducing facility improvements by three thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and fifteen cent and increasing park reconstruction by three thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and fifteen cent. Bill seventeen fifty-seven. Resolution further amending resolution number eight sixteen of two thousand and fifteen, effective December eighteen, two thousand and fifteen, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Sixteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Sixteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-One Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements by ten thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars, reducing splash zones by sixteen thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-nine cent and increasing park reconstruction by twenty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-nine cent. Bill seventeen fifty-eight. Resolution further amending resolution number seven seventy-two of two thousand and sixteen, effective January one, two thousand and seventeen, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Seventeen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Seventeen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Seventeen through Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements by twenty-three thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty cent. Excuse me. Reducing water feature upgrades by one hundred eighteen thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-one cent and increasing park reconstruction by one hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-one cent. Bill seventeen fifty-nine. Resolution further amending resolution number eight forty of two thousand and nineteen, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty through Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Capital Improvement Program by reducing recreation and senior centers by nine hundred fifty thousand dollars and increasing park reconstruction by nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. Bill seventeen sixty. Resolution further amending resolution six forty-seven of two thousand and twenty, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-One Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-One Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-One through Two Thousand and Twenty-Six Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, city facilities, by forty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and nine cent, reducing recreation and senior centers by one million six hundred twelve dollar- six hundred twelve thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty-two cent and increasing park reconstruction by one million six hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-three cent. Bill seventeen sixty-one. Resolution further amending resolution number eight eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-one, effective December twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two through Two Thousand and Twenty-Seven Capital Improvement Program by reducing recreation and senior centers by one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, reducing facility improvements, city facilities, by four hundred thousand dollars and increasing park reconstruction by five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Bill seventeen sixty-two. Resolution further amending resolution number seven twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, effective December twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Capital Budget the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Community Development Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three through Two Thousand and Twenty-Eight Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, city facilities, by seventy-eight thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and increasing park reconstruction by seventy-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Bill seventeen sixty-three. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to execute a quick claim deed or deeds and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying as is all of the city's rights, talents, and interests, if any, in Block Two J, Lot One Sixty-four Zero Two in the first ward of the City of Pittsburgh with an address of two hundred Ross Street to the Urban Redevelopment Authority, URA, for consideration of one dollar contingent upon the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance first entering into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties, Council District Number Six. Bill seventeen ninety-three. Resolution transferring a total of twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars within the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Operating Budget from the Office of Management and Budget to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the purpose of providing funding for a food justice coordinator position to administer the needs of the Pittsburgh Food Justice Fund. Bill eighteen oh five. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Youth Enrichment Services, Inc. for the purpose of spending grant funds in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand two hundred dollars to support programming to encourage banking access among learn and earn participants. Bill eighteen oh six. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance to enter into a lease agreement with the Pittsburgh Parking Authority for the off-street parking facility located at the northeast corner of Forbes and Murray Avenues for a period of twenty-nine years and an annual rental fee of one dollar per year at no cost to the city. And bill number eighteen oh seven. Resolution amending resolution two oh nine of two thousand and twenty-two, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Futures for professional services relating to leadership development training by increasing the authorized spend by ninety thousand dollars for a new total not to exceed cost of one hundred seventeen thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Thank you very much. Now, the first thing I'm going to do is I am going to, um, um, dispose in terms of simply not voting on, in this final action at the moment. So, we will vote on all bills with the exception of two thousand twenty-three, seventeen oh four, seventeen oh five, seventeen oh six, seventeen oh seven, seventeen oh eight, seventeen oh nine, seventeen ten, and seventeen eleven. All right? So, we are not voting on bills seventeen oh four, seventeen oh five, seventeen oh six, seventeen oh seven, seventeen oh eight, seventeen oh nine, seventeen ten, and seventeen eleven. We will reconvene for a public hearing at one thirty. We, we, we will recess this meeting. We'll come for a public hearing at one thirty, and then we will come back to the regular meeting of council for final action as it relates to these bills after the public hearing. All right? So, with those bills removed, um, you've heard the title, the reading of title of the bill. Are there any discussions on the remaining bills?
Yes.
Ms. Coghill.
The, uh, medical debt relief is one of these bills? I, I kinda lost track here. We're voting on that, correct?
Seventeen fifty-three, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. So, I just wanted to, uh, comment on that. When Mr. Wilson brought this up initially, it really intrigued me. Uh, coming from a household with three boys and a single mom who did not have health insurance. So, I really loved the idea, and I think I was instrumental in helping transfer or secure the funding for it along with Mr. Wilson. After last week's, uh, standing committee, uh, I was a little disappointed not to hear from the actual nonprofit that we're dealing with. Anytime we're giving a million dollars to somebody, I'd like to see and talk to them. Uh, as, and, and, you know, Deputy Mayor Pollak did a good job in explaining as to what they do, and I trust Councilman Wilson, you know, did his homework on this as well. I did look into this nonprofit. Lo and behold, I'm walking by my TV. I don't usually watch TV, but it was, uh, one of the national ABC or CBS or NBC that said, "R.I.P. What, what do they do? How, you know, where did they get there?" So, I immediately tuned in, dropped everything, and I watched it. It was very informative. And I will say, from that piece that they ran, very reputable people. Um, it was actually, R.I.P. was actually formed out of a protest on Wall Street many years ago. And, um, the two gentlemen who took this on came up with a very creative way in order to relieve medical, medical debt for, for people who are, you know, struggling. So, uh, I learned to appreciate and like it. And I will say, Councilman Wilson, our conversation yesterday got me to the point where I feel that I'm supportive of it. I look forward to seeing examples in front of us, which I actually, actually had on, on the show, which was really nice to see. So, um, so, yeah, so I'm in support of it. And, you know, I don't think moving forward, years to come, we are- our rules should be funding this. I think they do very well with, with the, um, foundations. I think first thing we should do is introduce them to our many foundations that we have here in the City of Pittsburgh that I think would be interested in supporting this. But, uh, I, I wanna thank Mr. Wilson again for bringing this. I think this initial million-dollar investment will at least help, you know, relieve people from their medical debt in the City of Pittsburgh, and I hope develop a relationship with R.I.P. where they could spend their many, many, many millions of dollars that they get from nonprofits more so in Pittsburgh, and hopefully will develop that relationship and will be a long-lasting one. So, um, so that, so that's it for me. I'll be in support.
Any other discussion? Seeing none.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I want to thank all members, uh, for their support in this bill, uh, referring to Bill seventeen fifty-three in terms of authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with R.I.P. Medical Debt. Because whenever the ARPA funding came down, I know that there was a big, a big, um, you know, statement that was made in terms of rebuilding communities. And I felt that, you know, whenever, um, there were a couple other cities that were interested in relieving this, this type of debt, that, um, this would, this is also a way to not only rebuild a community, but rebuild the people that were in the community. And, uh, you know, to see whether it's credit score, their credit scores increase uh, so that they could purchase, uh, a home, take advantage of one of our URA programs since, uh, medical debt is the number one reason, uh, individuals face bankruptcy in the, in the United States of America. So, um, just wanted to make a, a point to, to thank members, Law Department, Procurement Office, uh, my, my office, the O M B, the administration. Uh, I'm probably gonna leave some people out here, but, uh, anyone that's worked on it, appreciate all your time. And, um, looking forward to relieving Pittsburghers of their medical debt. I also want to thank, uh, Councilman Coghill for your comments. Uh, I didn't have anything to do with the, with the TV show, but I appreciate his tuning in and learning more about, uh, the great work that they've done. And, uh, I, I, you know, I just want to say, I always do try and bring, you know, speakers to the table when appropriate. So, I didn't know if it would be appropriate to bring who we go into the, you know, who we'd authorize to go into the contract with, just like we didn't have acts on at the table when we had, I mean, the contract was well over a million dollars. But, um, but I'm always happy to engage and, and provide as much information as possible so that we can get the job done. So, thank you.
Any other conversation? Ms. Coghill.
No, I just wanted to add, um, you know, the, the real underlying problem here is affordable healthcare. And, you know, R.I.P. comes in with a creative way in relieving people's medical debt by calling on, you know, foundations to fund them, and they're happy to do that. So, and it's just, it's not just about their credit rating. You know, many people, and we don't know who's going to benefit, but many people who have, you know, medical debt may have other debts too, so their credit still may not be good. But, um, so, so it's not just about that. It's about the weight on the shoulders of a single mom who has two or three children and mounting medical debt in order for us to just come in with an eraser and, and vanish that is, um... You know, my poor mother, she sent five dollars a month to, you know, our local, whoever we were, uh, you know, getting services from and orders because she was always afraid we're gonna be shut down, you know? So, so, um, so, so, yeah, it's much more about, you know, just getting the weight off the shoulders of a debt that people have to live with, probably not their fault to begin with because, again, the underlying problem is affordable healthcare across the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other conversation? Seeing no other conversation, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
A no on fourteen fifty-four, no on seventeen fifty-three, aye on all remaining bills.
No on fourteen fifty-four.
Fourteen fifty-four and seventeen fifty-three, please. Thank you.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Seven ayes on bill fourteen fifty-four and seventeen fifty-three and one no and eight ayes on bills seventeen fifty-one, seventeen fifty-five, seventeen fifty-six, seventeen fifty-seven, seventeen fifty-eight, seventeen fifty-nine, seventeen sixty, seventeen sixty-one, seventeen sixty-two, seventeen sixty-three, seventeen ninety-three, eighteen oh five, eighteen oh six, and eighteen oh seven.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. I believe that takes us now to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents bill number eighteen twenty, reported a committee on public safety and wellness for July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill seventeen thirty-three. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a commodities agreement or agreements with Stryker for a two-year warranty extension for equipment maintenance of the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, powered loaders, and cots at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars over one year. And bill number seventeen ninety-nine. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Staunton Farms Foundation for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to conduct harm reduction, mental health, and first aid trainings for first responders and community members working downtown and to faith leaders in the City of Pittsburgh.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Miss me. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents bill number eighteen twenty-one, reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill seventeen thirty-five. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed fifty-three million six hundred and ninety thousand dollars and increase of fifty million dollars from the previously executed agreement for costs associated with the construction phase of the project. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at a cost not to exceed sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and increase of fifty-six thousand dollars from the previous amendment. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill seventeen thirty-six. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Mob- Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take all necessary actions to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easements as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain if necessary involving the Charles Anderson Bridge Project. Bill seventeen thirty-seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the amount of one million nine hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to support landslide mitigation efforts on Newton Street. Bill seventeen thirty-eight. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take all necessary actions to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easement as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain if necessary involving the Liberty Ave HSIP Project. Bill seventeen thirty-nine. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take all necessary actions to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easement as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain if necessary involving the Penn Avenue Phase Two Project. Bill seventeen forty-one. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take all necessary actions to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easements as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain if necessary involving the Smithfield Street Project. Bill seventeen forty-three. Ordinance amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Four, Public Places and Property, Article One, Public Right-of-Way. Chapter four seventeen, Pavement Protection by Inclusion of New Section Four Seventeen Oh Eight Sidewalk and Curb Repair Program to authorize the directors of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Department of Public Works to develop and implement a program to provide- and the Department of Public Works to develop and implement a program to provide options and incentives for property owners' sidewalk repair and maintenance in lieu of prosecution. Bill seventeen forty-four, resolution authorizing acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the dedication of portions of North Beatty and Harvard Street, eighty-three P forty-three being parcel B, as laid out on the subdivision plan of block and lot eighty-three P one sixty-five, recorded in Plan Book Volume three oh one, page eighty, as recorded in the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate in the eleventh ward, Ninth Council District of the City of Pittsburgh, at no cost to the city. Bill seventeen forty-five, resolution granting unto Stella Property Group, LLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a dog park at sixty-three fourteen Broad Street in the eleventh ward, Ninth Council District of the City of Pittsburgh, at no cost to the city. Bill seventeen forty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in an amount of ninety thousand two hundred dollars to support building repairs, including ceilings and flooring the West End Healthy Active Living Center. Bill seventeen forty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in an amount of fifty thousand dollars to support building repairs and upgrades, as well as art and recreation equipment at the Mount Washington Healthy Active Living Center. Bill seventeen forty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department, Community and Economic Development, for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in an amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the design and implementation of improvements to Leslie Park in Lawrenceville, focused on feasible, buildable amenities driven by a community engagement process. Bill seventeen seventy-one, resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Fairston Street located in Crafton Heights be paved with asphalt in accordance with section four seventeen point oh six of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill eighteen oh one, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in an amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the renovation of Allegheny Riverfront Park with program partner Riverlife. Bill eighteen oh two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in an amount of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to support the renovation of Allegheny Landing Park with program partner Riverlife. Bill eighteen oh three, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a sub-award agreement with Riverlife for the purpose of spending grant funds in an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to support the renovation of Allegheny Landing Park. Bill eighteen oh four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public works to enter into a sub-award agreement with Riverlife for the purpose of spending grant funds in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the renovation of Allegheny Riverfront Park. And Bill number eighteen eighteen, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Seven, Article Three, Business Licensing, Chapter seven nineteen, vendors and peddlers to not permit vendors of any kind doing business on Grandview Avenue and noted side street.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protem?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to myself and the Committee on Human Resources. We'll ask Mr. Coghill to present for me, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill number eighteen twenty-two, reported to Committee on Human Resources for July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill seventeen thirty-two, ordinance amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, ensuring equal employment opportunity for persons previously convicted, Title One, Administrative, Article Seven, Procedures, Chapter one sixty-one, Contracts, by adding a new section one sixty-one point one six A and deleting section one sixty-one point one six H.
You've heard the reentitled of the bill. Is there any discussion on this bill, Mr. Kraus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I understand correctly, we had this discussion last week. This is to ensure that contra, vendors that we procure with follow or ban the box policy. I didn't say that. Well, I apologize.
Yes, I think you're right.
But that's it, right?
Yes.
So then, may I please be added as a cosponsor to the bill? Is it too late for that?
I do not think so.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no.
This is a bill that we did together a long time ago.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of how it that.
Probably two thousand nine, two thousand eight, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. And I really appreciate you doing this, and I'm proud to be a cosponsor of it. Thank you.
This is, this is by the administration, but I was the original sponsor of the banned box legislation a thousand billion years ago. You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protem?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presents Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number eighteen twenty-three, reported to Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill seventeen sixty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with OSMIOM data for services relating to the administration of the city's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Emergency Solutions Grant, and housing opportunity for persons with AIDS, HOPWA programs for some not to exceed ninety-eight thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill seventeen seventy, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the purpose of receiving grant funds in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with a local match of twenty-five thousand dollars over one year for a total project cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to support planning efforts to stabilize and preserve abandoned and historically overlooked structures in the Hill District. Bill eighteen oh eight, resolution further amending Resolution Number eight eighty-six of two thousand twenty-one, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two through Two Thousand and Twenty-Seven Capital Improvement Program, that including Poise Foundation is a grant recipient along with people of origin rightfully loved and wanted, poor law, and authorizing a subsequent agreement for a total cost of forty thousand dollars." Bill eighteen ten, resolution further amending Resolution Number eight sixty-three of two thousand and eighteen, effective January one, two thousand and nineteen, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Nineteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Nineteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-Four Capital Improvement Program, so as to adjust Emergency Solutions Grant CARES Act, funding by decreasing Emergency Solutions Grant by forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and six cent, then decreasing the Salvation Army by seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and increasing Allegheny Singer Research Institute doing business as A.H.N. Research Institute by fifty-six thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and six cent, and authorizes subsequent agreement or agreements to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services, and/or data collection activities."
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing no, seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Reverend Burgess Protem?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us finally to Councilwoman Warwick, Committee on Innovation Performance Asset.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Not finally, we have another bill up to us.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill number eighteen twenty-four, reported to Committee on Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology for July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seventeen sixty-eight, resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a cable franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania, LLC, at no cost to the city.
You've heard the title and reading of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protem?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is passed finally. Now, it takes us to Councilwoman DeP Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
President?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number eighteen twenty-five, reported to Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill two thousand twenty-two zero three seven six, resolution amending Resolution Number six six one of two thousand seventeen, entitled, "Resolution Amending Resolution Number four thirty-two of two thousand seventeen," entitled, "Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the City of Pittsburgh, the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, and the Pittsburgh Land Bank, PLB, to provide for future shared administrative services and the transfer of property among agencies for governmental redevelopment and portfolio management purposes, all districts, by providing for city council review of the policies and procedures of the Pittsburgh Land Bank pursuant to one seventy-four A point thirteen D of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances to authorize an amendment to the Cooperation Agreement. Bill two thousand twenty-two zero six four one, resolution of the City of Pittsburgh adopting an amendment to the Steel Valley Authority's Articles of Incorporation to decrease the number of members of the Board of Directors, Board of Directors of the Authority. Bill number seventeen thirteen, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the U.R.A. of Pittsburgh or U.R.A. of Pittsburgh affiliate in Alcasan for the sale of block nine B, lot seventeen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight in the twenty-third ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number One, at no cost to the city. Bill seventeen nineteen, resolution providing for the execution of a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the U.R.A. of Pittsburgh for the administration of certain projects and programs, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Council Districts all. Bill seventeen thirty-four, resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for costs associated with the Sylvan Avenue Multimodal Smart Project where PWSA will be responsible for paying one hundred percent of the actual expenses involved in certain work described herein and itemized in Exhibit B at an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-five cent, and further amending Resolution Number seven twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Capital Budget, the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Community Development Growth Program, and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three through Two Thousand and Twenty-Eight Capital Improvement Program, by increasing complete streets by one hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-five cent." Bill eighteen hundred, resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the Ferrywood Project, which will involve the development of a warehouse building, including adjacent loading docks, parking, underground stormwater management facilities, and associated utilities, at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill, Councilman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, so I, as you know, we passed provisionally the land bank tri-party agreement conditions, and all still had, I think, more discussion to be had. So I want to thank council members for spending time over the weekend with the bill and going over and fine-tuning some of the language. So in a minute, I'm going to motion to amend by substitution. And, but I'll just speak to what those amendments were. I think we had all come to some consensus about striking the reauthorization section, given that council actually does have the power to recall these agreements. So if things go awry in the future, we will be getting the quarterly reports that are called for in the conditions. So the public will have an opportunity to get the same information that we have, to see that their will is being upheld as the land bank comes into its own and is doing dispositions, and we will be able to have eyes on its progress. And then, secondly, under Section B, this is probably going to only pertain to a very small percentage of properties. So council may be disposing properties to the land bank, acknowledging in the resolutions for disposition that those, those properties are intended to go first to the land bank and then to proceed on to the U.R.A. As you saw, you know, in today's agenda and many, many agendas that we have every year, council disposes properties directly to the U.R.A. In the small percentage of opportunity, or properties, or small percentage of resolutions where the public and council expected that we would be disposing our city property to the land bank to end users like a nonprofit or a small, you know, homeowner or something like that, or one of our gardens, in the case that the land bank wants to do something differently and then, and then dispose it to the U.R.A., that there, it comes back for public notice. And so that would just be an official communication to the city clerk, like we see, you know, most weeks of our lives as well. And so we, we're assuming it just read into the record. And that replaces the communication to the council member that was in the first draft. And so again, this may never apply, or it may apply to some small percentage of properties. And so again, this, this section is there for transparency. And so we felt that the, the goals of transparency were, were met. So with that, I think we addressed everything. We had some inquiries this morning about the section on leaseholders for gardens. And I think that the concerns are, are accommodated in this language, that if, if a current leaseholder on a garden needs a partner in their disposition, that that's, you know, allowable in the contract language. And for everyone to keep in mind, this isn't contract language, this isn't cooperation language, these are just kind of boundaries, general boundaries on the conditions. And so we, we, I think they were good suggestions, but there are suggestions that I think can be accommodated in the actual legal language within these boundaries. So I believe.
I entertain a motion to amend by substitution. We will continue discussion, but let's, let's amend the bill first.
Oh, good point. Motion to amend by substitution.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, as nay, the bill has now been amended. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross for working with members over the, you know, this feels like just yesterday, we were at the table on Wednesday, but over the past week, because it's always better to, to work amongst ourselves instead of trying to, like what I was trying to do, kind of piecemeal some of the things that I didn't like about prior amendments. But I'm happy to see what's in front of me today and what we just voted on. we just voted on. And, uh, my concerns were, um, you know, they're, uh, they're reflected in here. And I think, uh, I think it's, you know, at, at the end of it, like all amendments when we work together, that it's the best product, uh, that we can have at this time. Thanks.
Any other conversation? Seeing none, the, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Warwick?
Yeah, I just quickly, just very quickly want to say that, you know, just as a newcomer, it's not often that we sort of disagree on things, or at least that I've noticed, right? That we, that we, you know, well, maybe not, maybe this is still, but I do want to say the way that this played out, I, 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 I really appreciated it. I appreciated the conversation and the respect that we all, and it just sort of made me proud to be a part of this body. So congratulations, everyone.
Mr. Chair, I'll chime in on that one then to that. It, it, this, thank you for saying that, Councilwoman. It, 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 this, this whole process of being, you know, um, deliberate in, in what we believe and what we came here to do and what we want to achieve. Um, this was a shining example of how we do things well sometimes. We really do things well sometimes. And it is done out of, uh, uh, genuine respect for one another, um, and, and, you know, we conduct ourselves as such. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's, it's the, it's the magic of everybody gets something of what they need, not everything of, of what they need. And we find the magic in the art of compromise. Uh, and it's effective leadership that brings us, uh, to be able to do that. And so I'll commend Councilwoman Gross too as well, as, uh, all members, where there was lots of discussion around this, uh, but always mindful and respectful and, uh, and, you know, we, um, we did good.
Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, um, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the vote, or the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you very much. The bill have received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. I want to do the announce, I want to make our meeting announcements first, and then we'll go to motions and resolutions. A meeting announcements today at one-thirty, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on the ARPA funding bills two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, seventeen oh four, seventeen oh five, seventeen oh six, seventeen oh seven, seventeen oh eight, seventeen oh nine, seventeen ten, and seventeen eleven. Um, and we will reconvene immediately after that public hearing. Also, council's recess will begin tomorrow, Wednesday, August second, and will end Thursday, August twenty-fourth. And the first regular council meeting after recess will be Friday, August twenty-fifth at ten a.m. Motion to resolutions. Anything for members? Anything for members? If not, I will say this before we recess, um, for, because we will be going to recess soon. Um, we have been in awe of proud body and members as council people. Our own responsibility, obviously, is government oversight. And we are, um, equipped and able to do that job effectively and efficiently. Um, I will mention Councilman Kraus. I think, um, as years pass and we both look back at our council days, uh, he and I, um, will see ourselves more similar than different, right? We are, both come from minority communities, and we have both been driven by, um, a personal religious ethic that has, that has guided our public works. And though, even though sometimes we fiercely disagree, we will probably have agreed on most than we've disagreed on. And, and I say that, we, we've been through, we've been through, we've been through the pension takeover and the, um, and Mr. Kraus was one of the architects of the pension plan, diverted money from our parking assets into the pensions to avoid state takeover. We've been part of a variety of crises. We've gotten ourselves out of Act forty-seven. We have created a better public safety. We've been part of the, uh, process of doing economic development. Uh, Mr. Kraus has been, uh, integral, have really changed the face of how things are going over the South Side. I like to think I've had a small part in changing how things are done in the East End. Um, and, um, we are now coming toward the end of our public career, probably. Um, I in part deliberately did not run for reelection, in part because I do not wish to be part of an oversight, uh, ongoingly. Uh, but I do say to say this, and I can only, I'm going to speak for him and I because we are, um, I, I like to think we are, we are, we are, we are devoid of any outside political pressure. We are old lions. Do not take our quietness for lack of vigilance. We know this government. Together, we have over thirty years of experience. We know this government. We know its authorities. We know how it functions. We know its purposes and its practices. We are extraordinarily vigilant, and we are old lions, which means we can still roar and we can still bite. Now, we, that is not our purpose nor our intention. I say this very publicly to say that this council is, and it will continue to do its duty. I am proud to be a member of the body, and we have the wherewithal to do it efficiently, effectively, for the best interests of the City of Pittsburgh. And I need to at least say that publicly. Um, with that, I need, um, I want to entertain a motion, um, that we recess this meeting, um, until after the one-thirty public hearing. So I need a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. We are in recess.